January 24th, 2022, Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, folks. We're going to start our meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brown, can you start us off?
Sure. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. Into the Republic which stands. One nation, and a God. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, this public comment. If anyone in the room has anything they would like to say, please state your name and address for the record. See anyone? Is there anyone on Zoom? Anyone waving?
Sir.
Sir, all right. Well, 6:05 is our first appointment. Six. Oh, wait, we will do it. Let's acknowledge payable warrant 2216B dated 1/11/22 in the amount of $460,303.22. Acknowledged payable warrant 2218 dated 1/18/22 in the amount of $228,906.88. I need a motion for open session minutes dated 1/10/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowlin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowlin, aye.
I also need a motion for executive session dated 1/3/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowlin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowlin, aye. 6:05.
6:05, beautiful. At 6:05, proposed relocation of portion of White Street with Town Council, DPW, and Planner. Folks, you want to come up? Come on up.
Town Council is here by Zoom. Not sure if you all can hear me.
Yes, sir. How are you this evening?
Very good. So, for everyone who I can and can't see, Ryan O'Hara, Bacon Wilson here to advise the town tonight on this issue. I believe that Attorney Brad Moyer is also present, probably with resident Mr. Ludorf. And I am not sure who else may be here, but obviously, it's the board's meeting. I think it might make sense for me to make kind of an introductory comment about what this agenda item is from my perspective, but I'm happy to address it however the board wishes.
You have the room. Go right ahead, sir.
Very good. So, this item comes to you in the context of some pending litigation that's currently going on in the land court. And in the land court, the town has been sued in an action to establish town owner Ronald Ludorf's alleged prescriptive, excuse me, alleged prescriptive rights. He claims a, basically, an easement by adverse possession, or even just title by adverse possession, to some areas along White Street, once known as Beach Way, which is a town, which is a private way, established via subdivision approval within the town. Now, the town's interest in that litigation has been to protect a turnaround that's located towards the end of White Street and used by town staff and employees, and to make sure otherwise that the litigation doesn't in any way impact the town's ability to use, maintain White Street as it so desires, or address utilities and the like for homeowners along White Street. Now, in the process of that litigation, which also involves the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as they have some rights that are implicated by it, a proposed settlement has come up that would call on this board to use what is honestly a pretty seldom-used power. Most lawyers I've spoken to didn't even really know it existed, but I have checked thoroughly. The board has the ability to relocate, under the ways statute, private ways within town. So, what the board can do under the ways statute, without laying out a new way, without making a way a public way, it can simply relocate an existing private way. And what the proposed resolution is here, and this will probably take some discussion, because it is a, it's a deceptively simple solution and sounds more complicated than it really is. But because the private way, as it was weighed out, laid out, goes from the southern, excuse me, from the southern boundary of all of the properties that go along this White Street and Beach Way, all the way down to the water as it runs along. What is being proposed here, and I should have clarified earlier. This is a road that's right around Lake Congammon. So, what's being proposed here is to move the boundaries in one small discreet area of the private way as it's laid out, up to conform with the actual developed boundaries of the road, and to skirt around an area that Mr. Ludorf would have then transferred to him by the Congammon Heights Association. Now, from the town's perspective, exercising this authority wouldn't result in any sort of taking of new property, because it would all be within the bounds of the existing private way. And also, it wouldn't, in my view, possibly infringe on anybody's rights in the road, as it would just be, Massachusetts law makes quite clear that as long as an easement still exists and is usable, and here, the actual private way, as it's existed for years and years, wouldn't be impacted at all. There's no liability in relocating an easement right. So, from my perspective, what the board will still need to see, and does not yet have in front of them, is a final layout plan that would draw the exact meets and bounds of the parcel that is going to be carved out of the private way, and if this resolution goes forward, transferred by the Congammon Heights Association to Mr. Ludorf, so that the board could properly vote on that being the new layout bounds. It would then have to go to town meeting, even assuming positive action by this board, for acceptance by the town meeting before the full relocation was ultimately effective. But just from my perspective, and at this point, I'll probably turn it over to the board if they have questions. I know that Mr. Ludorf's attorney likely wants to speak as well. But from my perspective, this is a great option for the town to get out of this litigation, to preserve the rights it has in the turnaround and the easements along White Street. Critically, the town does have deeded easement rights to do whatever it needs to do within the bounds of this private way. And from my review, the town's needs in this private way will not be at all impacted by this small proposed carve-out. And it would bring a final end to this litigation, which involves not only the town, but multiple residents, all of whom who are still participating or likewise on board with this possible plan, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, whose interest otherwise would be quite difficult to resolve. So, that was a lot of information. I hope it was helpful in providing some grounding, and certainly, there's a lot of specifics we can dive into that I'm happy to, to address as the board wishes to ask me.
Just trying to figure out how I'm going to get in trouble on this one.
I've looked pretty, I've looked pretty carefully to try to make sure you won't be.
I got news for you. That's never good enough. Attorney Moyer.
Unless you guys have any questions. You know, it's, it's a really interesting statute. I used it in Westfield before around Amden Ponds. Because as typical of those kinds of places, people thought the road was laid out here, and they put all their houses. Houses ended up being where the right-of-way of the road was supposed to be. And so, the city council in the city, the city mayor could do is say, just relocated it. And it's, it's saved everybody, you know, litigation on adverse possession claims. If you went out there and looked, and maybe you guys have, this doesn't change anything that's on the ground. In other words, the road is where it is. Where Mr. Ludorf uses is down a huge embankment that's all along the pond. And so, it's, it's not anything that's usable at all anyways. And the whole problem is, it's kind of interesting. If I can approach.
Absolutely.
All roads, and I'm probably talking too much for that. This is Beach, Beach, it's white.
Yep.
So, whoever did this plan showed this way going all the way to the water. And it never, so it doesn't, because this is, so this is if you saw the other plans, and all this is, is not even part of the road. But whoever laid it out never showed it to be the width of these. See how much wider it is?
Yep.
And that's where the whole problem started.
Randy. What are your thoughts?
I'm a little skeptical, to be honest. I, I'd like to see the plan before I really comment on it. You know, and I, I know I've been asking for that plan. We have, the latest plan I have here, I think, is dated a couple of months ago. You know, we use the road, obviously, we have to maintain it, allowing, there's, there's water and sewer lines on that road. We need space to be able to maintain that. So, I don't want to lose the ability to be able to do that. And without knowing how narrow they're proposing to make the new road, or the right-of-way, I guess, it really turned me to comment on that. But my concern is, is accessing the road for potential use and maybe future expansion, you know? Maybe there may, we need to put some rain line down that road, down the road. Right, who knows? So, I just, I don't want to lose that ability. That's my concern.
Brad, is there, is there a way, Brad, to make sure that any agreement that's worked out would give the town additional easements back to accommodate for the future concerns that the DPW director has announced?
Yeah, Carl, Carl, and certainly Brad, or Attorney Moyer can chime in on this too. But from my perspective, one, understanding that before the board were to act and send this to town meeting, I think there's a final plan that needs to be submitted for definitive action anywhere. So, this, this will have to be continued to a future meeting for a little further discussion. And I, perhaps that concern might be resolved once seeing the actual meets and bounds of the purported carve-out. I think as a practical matter, the land that's actually getting carved out wouldn't be useful for that sort of infrastructure. But that being said, I would expect, just knowing my participation on other sides of these things, that probably that sort of limited easement for that sort of future infrastructure would likely be acceptable to the landowner. Really, Attorney Moyer would have to speak as to that, though.
What I see is the width of the road would be what it is, you know, now, because that's what you have. And I think it goes to where it is. And what we're talking about relocating is really only what's in front of Mr. Ludorf, because it appears in the past there did some kind of deeds from Congammon to people on the other side, not, not expressing whether those are valid or not, you know? Those were done, so the towns will recognize those for some reason. You know what I mean? They made those waterfront.
We had this discussion two years ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did it. But when we looked at it, we just, how this came about is just as, I think, Mr. Mowlin would know. Whenever you create ways, anybody on that plan has the right to use the ways. Unfortunately, this plan is about 80 frickin' houses. So, I tried to get the land court judge to let me publish and just do people on the street with actual notice. But he made me serve everybody on any of the streets on the plan I just showed you, all those streets. So, everybody's gotten notice, okay? So, it makes it really easy. What I see happening is, because of that, an agreement can be entered into that clearly establishes the town's right to use all this turnaround, because everybody's been defaulted. There's only like three people left, okay? And the judgment would apply to everybody that got noticed. So, clearly, we can protect your rights in that turnaround, because that really is, is in a different part. It's a little wider there. Plus, we can also create rights on each side of where it's relocated, because we're only going to relocate this portion in front. You know, that's what the idea was, I believe, right, Ryan?
Can I clarify?
I would totally, go ahead.
When you say the word relocate, what are you actually doing? You're not relocating the road. You're just basically narrowing the right-of-way, correct? Is that, just so I'm clear?
I guess when I use the word road, I, to me, a road and a way means what it's supposed to be, not just the paved. So, I'm, I'm using it in a different way than you use it. So, let's just talk about what's supposed to be the way as opposed to what's paved.
So, what's laid out is 28 feet wide, right?
Whatever's laid out, whatever's paved, whatever's laid out there, but it's even more than that, because it was stupid, because the way that plan was, it went all the way to the water. So, it ended up being here, probably 70 feet wide, because this plan, with the Ludorf house here, these are 50 foot. So, because this plan, whoever did it differentiated enough on the other side of the road where the water was, it ended up being, there's 50 feet here, plus, you know, it ended up being this huge amount of space that this shows is actually what was the way as opposed to what is the travel of the paved road.
Nice.
So, we're not relocating the paved road. We're relocating where this plan showed the way was to what it exists on the ground now.
So, what is that width? So, right now, the right-of-way, right? Like, maybe it's, well, the right-of-way is 28 feet wide here, right? I believe, if I read that correct, 28 feet?
There's no way 28.
There's 14.
No, it's paved. Whatever it's paved, it's like paved 14 feet, because this is a stone retaining wall.
This is, this, so this, this line here, right? This line matches this line right here.
Yes, yes.
So, this darker line is the right-of-way, right? I'm calling it the right-of-way, where the town has rights to utilize?
Yeah, I guess you can say that, because this is what was deeded to these people.
Right, so I understand. So, this 28 feet here, right?
Yeah, let's, let's call it that, true.
So, what is, what are you proposing as the width in front of Mr. Ludorf's property?
We were proposing the width to be what is paved, because this is, this goes straight down. You know, you can't ever pay, you can't ever do anything with it. However, after town, place, part of your, I mean, you can be given an easement to access this. This isn't that important. We were more, this is the flat place. This is all down a hill. So, if you go out there and take a look, and there's a retaining wall here, too. So, we're not going around with it. This is not even across from us. There's a retaining wall here, there's a wood retaining wall here.
Yep.
And so, this goes straight down. So, so we were gonna, our goal was to get, relocate the way to where it's paved. Create this, so you have a clear, you know, rights to the turnaround, okay? And then give you whatever easements you need on each side for snow, or water, or whatever. For the water lines in the middle, you could never put it down here anyways. It's right along the water. Is that clear as that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I get, I think the easiest thing to point is what I say, so I heard you comment.
I think what we need, we need to do, where we've shown the road now, now I need meets and bounds showing what we're going to get from Congammon. Right, okay. Okay, excellent. So, we put it up, yeah, that, that's the assessor's map. That shows what the issue is. See how, so all those, all those are these on this side, which, which really were a part of your way anyways. Okay? Were all part, not your way, of the private way. So, they've never eliminated technically the town's rights to those, or the Commonwealth's rights. Fortunately or unfortunately, we're the first ones that really done it correctly.
And by doing this, what is this doing for you? What, how does this help?
It's going to give me the, you know, the profit.
Well, he's, he's used it, we have, we have an adversary for 40 years.
40 years.
So, what we did is, we started out saying, look, we're going to win this by adverse possession. But then the Commonwealth, because they own where your dock is, which is part of the subdivision way down, the only way they can give up, if, I can prove, I think I can prove.
Is that this thing in the water right here?
No, they have the right way, way down. If you look in your plans, this plan goes further down. And so, down over here past, so actually, on this land, the Commonwealth, where your dock is, way down, happens to be a part of this plan. So, they got caught up as being a name defendant, too. And so, and because.
And just to, just to not interrupt Attorney Moyer, just to clarify, when you're saying the plan, we're talking about the original subdivision approval for the whole Congammon Heights Association, not, nothing that is going to be practically impacted by the proposed relocation.
So, they got caught up in it. And if I can prove that our rights predated their rights, so they can, but I mean, this is all litigation. But they said, look, if the town relocates it, that's fine with us. Otherwise, my next step is I have to go to the legislature and get an act at a legislature, a special act, saying, fine, well, you know, we'll be there.
And this basically cleans up where your dock can go? Is that what it comes down to?
Right, well, it's got space there, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I mean.
But that was the problem two years ago. You're having an issue with the dock and.
Well, yeah. And if your dock, it wasn't, that I was told one thing, and then they said something else, and then it said something else.
I remember that, yeah.
Keeps rolling, getting bigger and bigger.
It does, it does.
We have an agreement with Congammon Heights for how much we're going to pay them. We reached out a long time ago, you know? And so, so, yeah, so, so I understand. We can get the exact stuff. We can talk more about if you want express easements, you know what I mean, to do certain things. You have some, okay? But if you look, this is not, there's nothing that goes down. You know, it's not really ever usable, you know what I mean? So, it can give you easements for snow, for any out, or, but this can be. What I'm talking about, Ryan, is the gravel turnaround, we can expressly create, because everybody's been notified. And so, we can put that in any kind of a judgment.
Certainly. I, I think that an important thing for everybody to understand here is that if the, what the board would be doing is just moving the boundary of the way as laid out, which I think Attorney Moyer showed quite clearly. And as long as the town gets adequate assurances that it's able to continue using things that otherwise would have been able to just do by virtue of its express easements in the private way. And in doing so, resolves the litigation risk. Then Mr. Ludorf owns it exclusively, such that he could exclude the town, or the town would have to do a taking to get those sort of rights. I, I think that that is a, a good deal. So, if, absent some agreement between Mr. Ludorf and the CHA, what the relocation of the way would do would be to make the land that's outside of the relocated private way just belong to the CHA. And if they choose to sell that to Mr. Ludorf, which seems to be the agreement they have, then that is, that is just fine. But in the town, by relocating it, what it would be doing would be just shifting where the private way is, and therefore, where the town's easement rights are. So, the number one concern that we would make sure, before I would ever advise the board to vote this forward, would be to be sure that those rights are preserved. And I think that that's what, what we're talking about, exploring in the interim between this meeting and another meeting.
Okay.
It should be quite easy, once we have a meets and bounds plans that shows the carve-out they're hoping to create, that will then be transferred to them.
Yeah, and that's, that's Randy's concern. He wants to see something on paper a little bit more than what he sees today, to, to, to make him happy, which is fine. We would too. We would, I mean, as a whole, we'll probably say, yeah, we're for this, but until we see something on a print also, you know?
Yeah, what I'm also going to want to see before I recommend the board to take any action, which I know I've already discussed with Attorney Morris, this won't be a surprise to him, would be draft deeds functionally that will be sufficient to effectuate any land transfers that have to happen, to affect, to make this plan have its intended effect prior to any vote. So, at the point that it went to a town meeting for acceptance, everything would be in place, such that the moment the town meeting accepted it, we're ready to have those transfers stop. So, that would be the other piece that has not existed today.
Town Planner.
I have, I think, just two additional questions. Also, I want to echo the same points that, seeing this on a plan, so that can be mentioned out in the field, or remarked somehow for our satisfaction and understanding, is important, as well as the rights issues. It's clear through this discussion, and Attorney O'Hara notes that there's some exposure that's trying to be mitigated and managed.
Right.
The extent of that, I can't fathom. But I guess, my first question is, the access to the portion of property supposed to be deeded over, is that from the, will it be from the right-of-way? Is it from the existing turnaround location? Is there any issue in terms of access?
This is a good, this is an earlier plan. This is the Ludorf house. Here's your turnaround right now. So, it's partly across from Ludorf.
I see.
But we're not, we're only claiming, because we didn't, this, this goes up here, this goes down. So, we were only claiming this part, you know, here, because this all goes up also.
Okay, so, if you're right, from the extent of the turnaround
Other side, right.
On eastward. So, I guess the, all that comes to mind, and I don't know if it's entirely applicable to this particular discussion, is, is this particular issue that's being managed in a rather sophisticated fashion now, is this present with other properties along, along the street? Is, is this unique to Mr. Ludorf's?
So, here's, from, sorry. From my perspective, I, I think that aspects of it, unique aspects aren't. What's, what's unique about this is Mr. Ludorf seems to be the only owner along the street, and not commenting on why this happened, or how frankly, the town, I don't. The CHA deeded over parcels out of private way to other landowners along the private way as a direct action, as to each one of those parcels, as to whether somehow the private way rights that the town and others arguably had, based on reference to the original subdivision plan, still exadverse possession. But as far as how things stand today with the property ownership and the ownership of the dirt under the layout, essentially, Mr. Ludorf is unique in that he is the only one on this street that has CHA-owned land across from him all the way to the water.
Right. So, who owns the land under the private way right now? Is it each homeowner in the middle of the street?
It's a, it's a typical private way. But what's interesting, that helps this town, is that, you know, you think, Attorney O'Hara has this, oh, back in 91, Congammon Heights granted you, granted the town the right to, to do anything in the ways, lines, everything, everything. So, it's interesting about that.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to say, that is of record. It's, it's a registry of deeds recorded, book 7855, page 281.
What's interesting, though, is none of the other people who, I don't know how they bought those parcels, as Mr. Mowlin knows, across streets, there's no recorded plan. They took them off assessor's maps, okay? I think the town picked it up, so they kind of waterfronted, so they get more taxes. That's one thing that happens here. This will be waterfront, these taxes will go up. But, but there was never anything done to do anything else. So, you still have technically rights all the way to the water on all the rest of the houses down the other side of the road. And I just, it's not something that even touched. It's just, it's been like that, you know what I mean?
But Congammon Heights Association does not own any, they own a small piece in front of your property today, according to what you can estimate?
Well, they own, because it went to the water, they own what would be under the laid-out, the way as shown on this plan.
In the right-of-way?
Yeah, under the private way.
Yeah.
Because there's no other owner on the other side.
Right. The default's to them.
Yeah, they own it, you know? They owned all the land and created the ways.
So then they will then convey a deed to Mr. Ludorf?
Yes.
And then, so what is the town, the town is, are we giving up land in the right of way to Congamon Heights Association by relaying this out? Are we upping people's land?
What, what the town is essentially doing is limiting the right to repass and pass that would otherwise be inherent in the, the private way to the, the proposed readjusted bounds. And because the actual road that has developed is still going to be there, and in any proposed resolution that I would advise this board to vote affirmatively on, all rights would be protected for anybody along that road. I don't see any sort of property taking happening or anything of the like, because mass law is quite clear that as long as the easement still serves its intended purpose, it can be moved around, uh, basically however, as long as it still serves the purpose, which here it will.
So yes, there'll be a parcel created per se, which Congamon Heights will then sell to him. See if I can, that's a really, this is, this is, conceptually, this is such a challenging case, because the problem is, that original plan was wrong. It should have, it, it showed this way in front of Mr. Ludorf's house. That's over seventy-five feet, up to the water. It was never intended to be that, you know? And so we're trying to correct that in one sense, and then, because we've used it so much, my sense is, and I don't like, I'm not gonna, you know, I don't like talking like that, but I totally expect to prevail if I had to try this case, okay? But, what am I gonna gain? Exactly what we're proposing, you know? So it's like, let's do something that helps everybody, you know? So let's create your turnaround clear. Let's create the rights for any easements to take care of the road or snow or anything, even though, and, and let's just do all that that way. That's what this comes down to, you know?
Can I just say, nothing's gonna change. I've, I've been here forty years, I've done it.
No, we understand.
I've taken care of that turnaround for forty years. Mowed the grass, planted shrubs with it. Water was, was coming down and wiping it out, moving rocks from the bottom, bringing them back up to the top. Um, there's nothing's gonna change. I just want that property to be mine, and that's it. It's not, I think it's probably, this right here, that's it, the tables.
By the time you're done, right. I understand.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, nothing's gonna change. The town's gone there, I mean, I was talking to Chris about a, some kind of a drainage, because when they redid the road for the water, they pitched it the wrong way. Used to go down to the end of the street, now it goes into the middle. So I mean, it's, nothing's gonna change, nothing, not a thing. I'm still mowing the lawn, I'm still planting flowers, I'm still making it look nice, you know? As long as I'm alive, I don't know if it would do after me, but I mean, that's it. I mean, it's no, I, I, I just can't believe all that little part. And yet I got, found stuff years ago that, that proves that the guy owned right down to the water, and he gave permission to the town to extend the road. So I mean, I don't know, it's just crazy. And everybody you talk to says the same, that, you know, nothing was done right when.
So is this the, just so you look at the place, it's kinda like what we're talking about, the hash area? So I, I estimate this to be about twelve feet wide by fifty feet.
Yeah, it's not very wide, you know?
So I think, take a look at that, that blue hash is where they're talking about.
And our main concern is just with the flat area. This is where they use, you know what I mean? Whether we own this or not, this is the flat area. But basically, that's where it gets relocated. But again, you know, any, any size easement that you need, you know? Then past that will stay Congamon Heights?
Yeah, the back of the road.
Yeah, no, no, understood, yeah. Each side stay, no, past that? The way he showed it, you're only taking the piece you need.
Right.
So.
There's nothing but, there's nothing but a bank.
Actually, we might just throw it in the deed from them. They have this worthless little piece, you know what I mean? I don't care, we can eliminate rights, it's just crazy for them to end up. Yeah, with that little piece. Yeah, Mr. Togger, tax them for it, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I think I just, we're just gonna get rid of it, you know?
Mr. Fox? It seems like we got a very simple plan, that's, uh, mountain out of a morrow.
That's right, I feel like.
So I, I think we need to let the legal beagles finish things up and see if we can't solve this once and for all. So you're gonna go ahead and get the means and bounds and all that?
I'm gonna get that soon as I can.
How, because we have a May town meeting. Are we gonna be able to make all that?
When's your next select board meeting?
Next Monday, next week.
But mostly weekly, other than Valentine's Day. And so, you know, I, I, what I would do is, as soon as I had this, I'd get it to Ryan, get a copy to Mr. Brown, you know, make sure we're all set. And then get back on the agenda. Which is what, so today's, this is January, so the deadline for town meetings after what, April sometime?
We were, yeah, we have to write our warrant articles in April.
April, usually the first week in April's the deadline.
I see no issue from the towns, uh, from at least town legal end in, uh, in having this before the board for a final vote, well in advance of that, so that, uh, all necessary things can be lined up.
Do we need a separate agreement, uh, to address Randy's concern? If in the future, some sort of new drainage, or sewers, or anything like that?
I, I do think that once we have the meets and bounds drawn out, we'll, we'll be able to have a very quick.
That would stay in effect.
Brad, can't, Brad, can't you just put that in the same document wording that you're going to work out with Ryan?
We can, you know, and we, you know, we can do that, plus we can reference, these rights you have now are pretty comprehensive for doing all that.
Right, restate those rights, and then whatever else Randy's concerned about when he looks at the new plan you're going to give him.
No, that's fine, we can do that.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I wanna make sure we get the plan that Randy's comfortable with, because we may be down there someday with drainage, or another water line, or sewer, or something like that, and we don't wanna.
Okay, so counsel, as far as tonight's agenda, the, the appointment just ends, there's no affirmative vote needed at this time, absent those documents being approved by you and recommended?
I think so, I think it's easier, we, Ryan and I talked about continuing this for some time, some meeting in February. So I don't know if it's easier for the board to do that, or for him just to get ahold of you and get on the agenda when we're ready.
Yeah, he can do that.
This is just an agenda item, it's not a public hearing.
Right, it's just an agenda.
So we can carry this under old business, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, I have a question. Does it need to go to planning board at all, by chance, or no?
The way I read it, it didn't need to go to planning board.
Okay, and the second question is, can we just have some language that there will be nothing built, like in this area, that would prohibit the town to use it for future use? Like no structures, permanent structures, something along those lines?
That's.
Is it already in the easement?
Well, when, you know, we, we couldn't interfere anyways with your use, what you have. Um, and then, don't you also have latins issues? This, don't you have?
Well, there's probably frontage that has, that comes into play, yeah. I mean, there's, there's permits you could get through Concom to build, I would suppose, theoretically on that area.
I mean.
Oh, you could never build on that area.
What, the area you're talking about is not along the water, you're talking about area up here, right?
Yeah.
That's something, yeah, I don't have any problem with that, we don't expect it, because it's not very, where, the area that's level with the road is not very wide in that part, from the pavement to where those walkways are. No, we can, I have no problem.
But there's an easement to the town for the use of that turnaround, correct?
There's, right now, no, we should put it in, because that, where that turnaround is, is actually part of where, on this old plan, people didn't show any land. And so, Mr. Ludorf's not claiming that at all, because he knows the turnaround's there, and that's where, if you go down there, the land comes up, and then it kinda goes out. So his dock and area is down, it's, it's, so I have no problems. Part of this, showing this plan, you know, describing that, that turnaround, you know, stays for the right of, actually, it could just stay for the right of the town to use, or anybody to use. That's something we can work out.
All right, uh, counsel had to go on to another public meeting, so, but he knows, he, he'll be expecting to hear back from you, Brad, okay?
That's fine.
Great, so this appointment's over.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's too hard, so hard to explain this.
No, it's fine.
Sweet, Randy, I'll grab you, and we'll go take a ride down there, take a.
Sure. Okay, don't get lost.
Well, you're gonna put the coffee on, so we're gonna, we're gonna call you first. All right. Fire chief, six fifteen, fire chief. How are you tonight, sir?
Good, yourselves?
Good. You'd like to talk about first, safer grant, or safer staffing grant?
Yeah, so it all kinda rolls into each other, so to speak. Um, we have an opportunity to put forward the safer grant, which we had in the past, and we haven't gotten it.
Yep.
Um, so this time, what I was looking at was the possibility of putting forward for four firefighters that would add one to each shift. Um, that, this, this time, it includes four, excuse me, three years, a hundred percent funded benefits, salaries, um, everything, assurances, et cetera. On year four, there is not a requirement to keep them per se, although we want to. Um, but there used to be a mandate that said if you kept them, you had, you know, if you got them, you had to keep them for X amount. So they've dropped that. Um, but what they do like is if the board votes to be on board with it, not just me sending in a application, say, this is cool, and then everybody rejects it later, you know, should you ever get it.
Right.
So, in the, in the first glance, um, I would look to if the board is in favor of it, to just make it official tonight that you did vote in favor of it, um, so I could put that in the grant application. It's a very competitive grant. Um, I don't know if that will carry weight, or it won't carry weight. It's a, based on firefighter performance, not ambulance, even though you can use them for ambulance. Um, so what they really look at is what we call two in, two out, so that you have four people arriving on scene of any fire call. Um, we've seen what the twenty fours did firsthand with Kirk Connor's house, and two guys were out the door, kept it in check till the rest of everybody got there. So we see the potential of what's there, and how it improves things. Um, what, second part of that is, is in my budget, you'll see a, um, a request for one paramedic under the normal budgeting. And to include it in what we call sort of a, um, a split shift, or a coverage shift. We know right now, we looked at fifty, or we looked at six months of the ambulance calls, and fifty-eight times, we call Westfield Raglan. We, we were on another call, couldn't get ALS, whatever, we got one person, not two. Um, you stretch that out over, project that over a year, you know, you're looking at over, you know, a hundred, and you're looking at roughly seventy-three thousand dollars net, that we gave to somebody else from the ambulance, if you're strictly looking at money. So it pretty much washes the cost of one paramedic in that mid-shift, whether it be Monday through Friday, or rotating, or whatever. Um, on top of that, we increase the time, time rate to, you know, for response, to get ALS to that, to that scene. So, we've invested a lot, we've seen a lot, but it's really working. We're getting, you know, time and time again, we're getting calls that getting there early makes a difference. So, everything we planned on is, is working, and that's good on the short term. This one position that I'm asking for in the budget would take us through that, um, that home, so to speak, of when we're, when people are out of town, there's times when I've responded to a fire call by myself, because there's no one back. Um, Rich has done the same thing. So, that's the addition for the one person. Now, with that said, unlike other grants, on this one, we can fund with single person. Should we be lucky enough to get the four-person grant, that can be included. So you're not adding five, you're, you're four. We could just roll that into it, and they, there's some way that they pay back, or they, they include it, I'm not quite sure the details of that, but it is, you can do that. I can't buy a widget, and then go for it in a grant and get it, and wash it. But in this one, they allow you to. Um, so what, I think what you, what we have to look at is, where are we from now? We do, we know we have other buildings going in, we know, you know, the town has, I know we've kept below ten thousand, but probably barely, in reality. And I don't know if anyone's done daytime populations. Um, which is a whole different thing when people come to see our stores, and visit the shops, and do all that. So, um, we see that as an accident, someone falling down at a store, getting sick, or something like that. So that calls happen to do our increase. We're at twelve hundred ambulance calls, I think, roughly this year, which is pretty much a record year. Um, a lot of reasons, you know, we had COVID and everything else, but, um. So, where are we gonna be in three or four years? Having that extra person on shift, I think, would be a, a real need, because of the second ambulance, and having some fire protection, should we go somewhere else. Um, we, what we're seeing is, we're on the Bay State more often, taking longer to go, we're out of town an hour, hour and a half, as opposed to seventy percent of our calls went to Noble before. So, the ALS is requiring that.
Who pushes that? The insurance industry pushes where they go?
No, medical.
Nature of the call?
Nature of the call, it's what we call a point of entry plan. So if you have X, Y, Z, it'll determine you go to Bay State, you know, strokes and stuff, still go, still go to Noble. Uh, but there's a point of entry plan that dictates us medically where we have to take them. And, in some ways, the patient can ask, and we're not, logic can do to say no.
Where do you normally go, Russ, from there? Bay State?
Wherever they tell me they can get me there.
Dog bites go to.
Dog bites go to Noble? Just checking.
They told me I had an option.
Yeah, that's what the dog said, yeah.
Um, so that's kinda where the, the grant part comes in, and it is very competitive. Um, Kenny Bunkport had similar issues to us, you know, um, a little bigger because of the tourist side of it, from the town side, but it was, it's similar. Uh, they actually went for eight people to get four. And they have four on, you know, four on every road. They had multiple departments, things of that nature. If you're ever to go to that extent, you're talking about reorganizing the department structure.
Right.
And that's, it's a little bit to bite off, I think, four years from now.
I'm sure our summertime numbers are much higher, like you said. You got, they say six hundred registered votes on that label, right? So, so you're right, you know, our daytime numbers.
Probably twelve thousand.
Who knows?
On a summer day, I, I don't know. I think you'd have to look at the, I mean, you'd have to look at the parade of ambulance calls. I don't, and I don't know that we've ever done an adequate survey to say, in Southwood's a bedroom community. In normal times, not now, normal times, I would say the population probably decreases during the daytime, because people go out, go to work, people come into school, you know, the, the people that work at the Southwood schools that don't live in town may come to the school district, and people come to places that they do work in town, but net, I would say you have an outflow. Right now, I'd probably say it's probably not, because a lot of people are working from home, or, or what have you, but, um, or maybe it's a wash.
There are peaks and valleys.
Sure, oh, definitely, and definitely. Anyway, as the senior population increases, it's a, you know, it could be a, a larger retirement population, so they are here all, all twenty-four hours, so.
We, we see more and more, um, from an ambulance standpoint, we see more and more people that aren't from town, that were transported.
Yeah.
So whether they're shopping, or accidents, or things like that.
Bottom lines, we're a gray community, you know, and these are services that we're gonna need to have to provide. And you talked about quicker response time. I certainly don't have any problems making a motion to wholeheartedly support going after this grant. Uh, we need it.
I sat down with him last week, and we had a long discussion over this, and that's what we said we'd do. We're not going backwards, we're going forward. Population's getting bigger, and, you know.
Well, you're getting a population that needs that medical attention.
Yeah.
And I, I did do a comparative, which I didn't put in your packages, but Carl was forced me to take my forty-page report onto one, so. Um, but anyways.
Well, we'll do the long one at the full budget.
Yeah, I, I'm just teasing. Um, but when I, when I looked at, uh, towns under ten thousand, half a dozen of them, we're at basically eight firefighters, they're at twelve to sixteen, you know, depending. So, this puts us right in where the state average is, um, where we would be.
No, I mean, we, we're all in on this ALS thing. We've been all in, you know, supported this the entire way, we've gotta keep going to get to where we need to get to eventually. I would support it a hundred percent, but I don't see how you can.
Yeah? Did you make that a motion, Carl? Yeah?
Yeah, I made a form of a motion.
Yeah, I had the second motion.
There you go, all those in favor, Joe D D, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Drop your list.
So then, on, um, budget.
Yeah.
You got the one pager, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, again, we wanna look at adding that one, for the same reasons, that one person.
Yeah.
In a mid-shift. Um, the, you know, there's, there's all the other things that they can be doing on that mid-shift as well. Um, being around day-to-day, we have inspections, you know, we have the whole fire prevention thing. That's gonna need to grow bigger legs at some point, you know, Buddy's doing a great job of it now. But, um, you know, it's, I think a reality that at some point, that's gonna need to change as we get more involved with different things, so. Um, and that's not necessarily a tomorrow thing, but it's definitely on the horizon.
It's coming, yeah.
Um, on the conference and travel, hopefully we go back to in-person stuff. Uh, that's an increase from two thousand to four thousand. Um, or every, general statement on the budget, both EMS and fire, everything's level funded with the exception of, of the things that I have here. Um, getting to fire, we have an increase of five percent. Remember the minimum wage we voted on some time ago, um, for the entry call force members? So that's just enacting that. Um, increasing inspection and repair, right now, our thirty thousand is in the hole. Um, finding just stuff is a lot more expensive, for whatever reason. And even the preventative maintenance, for whatever reason, way up. Um, you know, we try to, obviously, we have someone come through and go through every truck head to toe. Not finding a lot, but the costs are still, still way up. We've looked at different vendors, um, and we really can't find a way to make it up. So that's projecting to be up to ten thousand. Again, under the fireside, increasing, uh, the conference and travel, again, from twenty-five to four. Under capital, if you remember right, some, uh, I must say, when I first got here, I think we got the SEVA bottles, and air packs under the grant. Those have a fifteen-year life. Um, I wanna start replacing a few every, every couple of years. Um, over this, with Terry Mish, my liaison, he was wondering if we could go to a two bottles a year, you know, a bottle or two a year, and every year, instead of six, you know, every other year, or whatever, I said I'd be open to, to anything at that point. It's just, I know we need to replace them and have some extras.
Do they reset those, or no?
What's that?
Do they reset those?
No, um, they're fiber wrapped, so they have a fifteen-year life. Um, next thing is, replace car two, which is actually the twelve-years-old that Don Morris bought as his chief's vehicle way back. Um, we're using it for EMS, taking people to academies, things of that nature. Still got some life in it, it's like, I think, eighty. It's like, I think, 80, 90,000 miles. It's clean like everything, but you start taking a 12-year-old vehicle on emergencies, you start to roll the dice a little bit. So, what we like to do is replace that with a four-door pickup with a cap, slide-out drawer. And again, that would be used for helping out the medicals. It could be taking gear to the academy, taking more than one person to the academy, which we've had a problem with the old pickup. If there's three or four people going now, they don't fit. Estimate on that's 39,000 going from the state, the state bids. And then last but no, lease, lease is to replace the back. So, we have the existing pickup that the association bought that, um, it's like 12-years-old as well. It's spotless, however, it doesn't really go to emergencies on an emergency response. Buddy uses it for inspections. Um, they will use it to go to some education, like a car if they need it once in a while. What we want to do is take the pickup back off and put a utility box on the back just to have more versatility in it and to use it. And that's estimated at 5,000. One thing that is not in here is any of the things that, um, Police Chief and myself have talked about with the dispatch. Although, from the fire standpoint, um, he'll have some more challenges than we do. Some of ours, like on the, at the man trap and the video stuff is going into a 911 grant, um, whereas he has to repurpose a, a room, so he'll have a little bit more, but we are in communications of what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
I'm in pretty good, good shape, but I don't know how we approach that because of, we don't have a big operations budget for dispatch right now. Let's just say July 1st, let's place things go to December, but you still have to pay salaries, you still have to do all that stuff, and then you're still in some of the money that won't be used is under salary line and it's not under operations line. So.
Right, and we have the transition cost too, chief.
Exactly, and that's what we need to develop is a transition budget or something that's a little bit more open-ended and a little more, uh, uh, you know, not to the letter per se, because there's some stuff that are just unknowns at this point. Um, but Bobby and I have been talking, um, I know he's had more detail because he has more stuff to be in.
Right, but I believe you and Bob and Doug had a discussion with Mr. Scanlon and the that we will need to structure that budget so that we can accomplish that transition.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm sure it'll be in fiscal '23, but we just don't know when. Um, between equipment, they're going out for, we're going out for a new RFP for the equipment, Westfield is, um, due to some bidding issues and concerns and just start over, get it right. Don't, don't be making piecemeal down the road. That was the, um, the suggestion and, and hopefully we'll back up, I'll back out on a grant this, or back out on a bid this, this coming month, we'll, we'll be back up and running. Supply chain, who knows?
But that was the other thing we talked to Scanlon about too, was the, you know, what, what the parameters are for an RFP and bidding and contracting and.
One thing we did, uh, were able to do was we had the $75,000 EOPS grant that was designed for microwave as part of the project. Uh, EOPS is allowing us to change that, do our backup, I won't get into technical terms, but the backup radio system, that would be, we'll be putting that in the final design work and moving that, taking that money and moving it to the front of the design. So, if we should need to go over parts, go over to a Westfield doing dispatches sooner than later, our radio communications and stuff will be allowed to be tied in. So, that's good that we're going to be able to do that and, and Mike Gerard's champion in that to get that going with the Westfield boats. It is something we'll need eventually, but we're just putting it in the front. It'll be used as backup when we're done. We, we just don't know.
Okay.
That's the future digest budget. Any questions?
There's some wise-ass questions that I'm just telling you.
That in March when we meet and see the other 39 pages.
What color will the truck be? Will it be lighter? You know, those stupid questions like me, you know.
To be determined.
To be determined.
Going to have a big ice cream cone on the side.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sure before the chief gets up and leaves the table, you might want to discuss with him the first action item you have there on your agenda.
I thought you told us to tear that up and it didn't exist. Has that changed? It has? Okay.
Well, this is, this is a very important discussion and meeting and it's.
Noticing Anderson retirement. Do you want it at noon time that day and are you thinking on a Friday?
To be determined.
To be determined. So, you gave us a notice.
Yeah, I wanted to just, um, you know, make it official so everybody knew time flies when we're having fun here.
Boy, yes.
Um, hard to believe seven years has zipped by already, but, um, the, uh, I, I don't know what the intent is and, you know, how the progression works. My last day is, you know, sort of 65 on November 6th, so some vacation, could be some early, a little earlier than later, but this summer, obviously, that's something on, going to be put on the top of your priority list and figure out what's going on.
Okay.
Glad to help out however I can.
And you will.
Right, so that's why when we get down to new business, the board can determine what might want to place the, uh, the transitioned costs that relate to, uh, you know, a search for somewhere in the command center within one of your budget line items. But chief, I want to thank you for your service and we're looking forward to working with you all the way through to the November time period. You've brought a lot of energy and knowledge to the.
He's already saying goodbye to you.
I know.
And it's only January. Give him a break, will you?
It goes, it goes along with the notification, Mr. Vice Chief.
I think what he's saying is he doesn't have to negotiate another contract.
Yes.
All the night that he hasn't said.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you won't be visiting our office.
I want to put up with you. Thank God.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, yeah. In all seriousness, chief, I mean, this has been a, well, unprecedented time, but you've done an unheralding job here in, in guiding us through this transition that we've been going for almost the entire time you've been here.
You were tasked with this whole project, really.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's why it's gone so fast, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, but no, it's, it's been a good, it's been teamwork too. There hasn't been, you know, and like I said in my letter, I appreciate your openness to listen. That's all I can ask, not to agree, but at least that we can talk and, um, yeah, agree to disagree on things and other things we move forward on, so.
Yeah. I think you've done a great job. It's been, uh, it's been wonderful having you.
We've got more to do.
Oh, we've got more lineup to do.
Yeah, great. I was breaking up, sir.
You can't break up when you're in person at a meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
Alrighty.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. See you, Russ. Okay, so next up I have Latify. Chairman to approve DPW supervisor Kevin Soper letter of understanding. You guys saw that?
Oh, make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Wonderful. The vice chairperson to sign DPW supervisor transition process, MOA with local DPW SEU unit.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
And we have approval of wiring portion of the AED gift at Wally Park, and it looks like it's $800 to have that all wired up.
Do they have it?
Um, they got a quote.
They got a quote and the Park and Rec Commission Board asked if the selectmen would help finance that portion of installing that new piece of equipment.
Well, Russ Fox will make that motion, uh, and I'll, uh, ask the CAO to determine which account that's coming out of.
I'll second the vice chairman's vote.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
And I think that's great that we got that, they got that donation.
It's a win-win, yeah.
Great for them, uh, seeking it and getting it.
And we got a couple. I got the mobile one going from the beach too.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that's coming next.
Yeah. All right. Increase part-time SPD officers and part-time dispatch pay rate to minimum wage of 1425 per hour.
Russ Fox will make that motion to come into compliance.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Approve PVPC CDBG grant, administrative services invoice number six and the amount of $5,472 and 43 cents.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
And then basically we went to, it looks like North Lake Avenue, some engineering and design, housing rehab program, our community food pantry, and then administration, so that's what that is. Okay, approve SPD FY22 state 911 grant and the amount of $1,458.12.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
To the EMB.
Doug Morgan will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Approve MADFS grant of $15,480 to Southwood for turnout gear and helmets, so that was through the fire department.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye. This is a good grant.
It's a great grant.
I, I just like to say, now that Russ has left the room.
Yeah.
I think he's paid for his salary with all the grants he's gotten at Town of Southwood, but I didn't, I didn't want to mention it in front of him.
Yeah, no, he's paid that.
The bar is high.
The bar is very high.
Whoever is going to be the incoming chief.
Yes. Okay, we have exec session tonight. I have a packet that says executive session. I looked at it and I don't think we really need to have one tonight because, uh, we've designated the, uh, chairman to work out those details. Oh, wonderful, okay. Then I don't need to go. That would be my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good.
Carl, do we need executive session?
No, you don't need to have one tonight. Those are just the, uh, the pending issues that, uh, the chairman is working on and that I'm assisting him with, and then there's other issues, litigation, so.
All right, thank you.
Speed, board members.
Okay, thank you. So, new business, we have the FY23 budget packet we received for review.
Right, and the only two pages that I wanted you to look at, one is of course the select board, one, you, you know, you have a hired service account that you use each year, and if you may want to, um, contemplate increasing that hired service dollar amount to a man staff recruitment to fill an anticipated vacancy, which will, you'll be going through that process after the May Town meeting. Whether you do that for the highest level position or backfilling, if you're using the bench approach, then you'll be needing to do that, uh, backfilling, uh, the bench. And last time we did that with the fire chief, it was about 9,000.
Okay.
So, that's something that you, you need to, uh, be aware of. So, what I was suggesting, that since I'm going to have to submit this document and everything else is pretty well all level funded, that I was going to increase it, that five number up to 15. Any objections to that?
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
And then on the next page, under the CEO, he was the assistant for human resource procurement, and I was wondering, uh, when we had done that estimate, it was originally 65 to 72. What number do you want me to plug into the budget, uh, that we're finalizing as a submission for discussion purposes with your full boards and the finance committee for the March budgets? We can either choose a number, we can leave it alone, and then finalize the number in
You have a recommendation, Carl?
Well, the, the, you know, if you go back to the original number, it was in the 65 to 72 discussion, but, uh, that was more of the placeholder that you put there to start the conversation because different than the chief going, you know, my position, myself, you know, will be doing a transition in the next several years, so we need to be, uh, preparing for that with the division of the duties.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we put in $75,000.
Yeah, it's just back to that HR position that we keep talking about.
And procurement, it's also insurance. There's other things that go to it. It's more than just that.
Understood.
Well, it's the salary line item, but I would just, I don't know that we need to vote on it, but you're in, you're right on the ballpark. Given what the market is right now and what everything else is doing.
I'm looking, right, I'm looking at the market and to get any qualified individual, it's got to be.
I think I've, I've been giving you, gentlemen, what it will cost in the future for a new manager, so you can imagine what, that this is right along the lines of, of something.
So, I, I think, I would suggest we budget it for 75, you know, and start the discussion with the finance committee there.
Yeah.
So, those are just the two, the two big ones. The rest of the stuff is very small and we'll, we'll be utilizing that with other line items and then, you know, this will be all part of that, uh, process when we all get together because Southwood is very unique where the sitting select board and finance committees jointly here, along with the CAO, um, everybody's budget presentations and discussions all in one room at one time, as opposed to passing people on to different nighttime appointments with different boards and committees. This is a very unique approach we take to budgeting in our community. And I believe some of that came out of, uh, Bob Meneguzo.
Broke up, Carl.
I believe that, that was a suggestion by Bob Meneguzo many years ago.
A lot different from back in the early days, or proposition to, you had the miserable five that operated. We operated mainly at nighttime.
The miserable five.
Safer.
Well, it, it took, it took 10 weeks.
It was a hell of a year.
Well, did they do it different than they did this last year? They didn't sign you up to get rid of you? They did it different?
Well, there might have been a few incidents.
Few cars were teed and.
Oh, that's all.
Tires there.
Oh, tires were slashed. That's their prifian business.
We can finally get gas in town now, all right.
Well, we can get gas in town.
Well, I tried it this week, it worked out already.
It worked out? Okay, so yeah, that, that for HR, I think that's great. Keep that rolling. Clarify grant versus gift on accepting gift donation.
Excited is when we, yes, I think, I think in our minutes, in our discussion, we called it a grant. It's technically a gift.
It's a gift.
Important because the, the town accountant has different line items for what are called grants and different line items for what are called gifts, so let's just be clear in our minutes so that Robin can reflect it as a gift from that organization for that purpose.
You need a motion, Carl?
Yep.
Russ Fox will make that motion to accept that gift.
Doug Morgan will second the motion, and also I want to clarify, did we, we just voted on the minutes? I thought I read it through, uh, prior to this meeting. The minutes should have been clear. If we need to, we can go back to that first article tonight and amend the minutes to reflect what, what actually transpired.
Yeah, that might have been in there, I, I think, Doug, that might have been on the open session of the 3rd of January.
Okay, all right.
But the, the important thing is that we've done it.
Because it wasn't, a grant has all kinds of different connotations to it than a gift.
Right, so you're set now that you've done that vote, we can go on to the next time.
Very well.
No, it's on the, it's on the 10th minute.
Yeah, I wasn't believing what I had just.
Why don't we do the actual vote?
Yes.
I made the motion, Doug seconded.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye.
Perfect, taken care of.
Thank you. This up is the ATR for twenty-twenty-one notice.
Yep, the board needs to make sure it's designated one of its members to finish draft annual town report for twenty-twenty-one.
Chairman does that, right?
Unless he doesn't.
You're breaking up, Carl.
Designate somebody.
The town report, then that's definitely Mr. Fox. He's got a knack for people. I don't know what it is, but we're going to continue that on, yeah.
Okay.
I'd be too blunt and miserable and I won't even be around for the report, so. And he's just a clerk, so it's gotta be Mr. Fox. So Mr. Fox, good luck with that. Do we need that in form of a motion or you just do it?
I think you just did.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. I appreciate all the time and patience. Uh, Westfield that comes down the side there, all right. Discuss SME status for planning board for MGL chapter two-six-eight A guidelines.
Yeah, as you know, mister, and I think Doug can has an idea how it works for the planning board, but Mr. Sutton did get his advice from the Ethics Commission. And they said, the recommendation is the, the select board does have to review move a special municipal exemption for the entire planning board so that one of its members can be able to take advantage of this exemption. And then when that's done, he then just files a disclosure separately on his own with the town clerk's office. That is his guy.
So we need a vote to, for the entire planning board? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yep.
How about the town planner? No?
Well, the, the town plan did separately, and that's not an elected person.
Thank you.
This is just for the planning board.
Then Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye.
Right, and then since we're updating this form, you at a previous time had, had supported the town clerk, treasurer, collector, also running the treasure on the Hampton County Retirement Board. And we want to add that also to this municipal employee list.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye.
Okay, review and approve updates to gas plumbing permit fee schedule. You guys look at this?
Yeah, it seems like we're always going up.
Yeah. Did you look at the other towns though?
Yes, everybody's going up.
Yeah. Yeah. This is just for the gas and for the plumbing.
That's correct. It's not for any of the other trades or inspectors.
If we make the motion, Carl, we need to, a, a time that they're going to go to effect.
Oh, you could do that. That's certainly within the prerogative of the board to set a date, certain time in the future to give proper notice.
I know everything is going up. You know, we just talked about salaries and things like that. Permits are supposed to cover the actual cost, so.
Yeah, right, and you'll see Kyle did provide to you community's fee schedules.
So Morgan, your thoughts?
Well, to what Carl said, I kind of like to know, some of these are twenty-twenty-five percent or twenty percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent increases across the board. I'd like to know what the deficit is against the cost, but it's kind of hard to put it all together. I did look, I did look at the numbers that he's providing and especially on the building permits for new residential, we're significantly below.
Yeah.
Some of the other ones, you know, I think we should probably offer alteration renovation where someone might be replacing a furnace or, you know, replacing a water tank or something like that. And they're already taking it in a bad way because they have an unexpected repair or something like that. And then you're going to go get them again. I would like to take a little longer look at that one, but subject to what you guys want to do.
I, I'd like to table it for, for one week.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Motion to table.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye. Mr. Didi, while you're reading ahead, I'd like to just make a quick motion subject to the vice chair's approval. Just since we approved the minutes at the beginning of the meeting, can we just make a motion to reconsider and amend the meeting minutes of January tenth?
Yes.
Because that would just solve all of our problems and Robin's going to have to publish these anyway. But it was on the action item for it was accept a sixty-five hundred dollar grant and it should have been gift, but I missed it too from Safe Southwood on the, the minutes we just approved at this meeting, so.
I'd make a motion to revote and amend the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye.
Okay. So all I have for new business. Carl, do you have anything for new business?
Well, let's see, Joe, you and I and the building inspector will be meeting with the school about the powder mill school roof leak enclosure last week. And we're going to be securing an update about what's going on with the building. And that is because the town is the landlord of the school properties and the selectman, you know, is the, you and I will be having that meeting with them this week.
I'm excited. Wednesday, I believe, right?
Yeah, it's all about keeping you excited, Joe.
It is. Long time. Okay, anything else for new business?
Well, Mr. Chairman, while we're discussing that, and when we're having that meeting, we might as well schedule the annual review of all the buildings.
Yep.
Uh, because of the pandemic, we've, we kind of missed last year.
Oh, I guess you went there. I'm too worried.
Fire chief and building inspector.
Yeah, we'll do it.
And Dave Sutton.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah, Dave will enjoy that.
Normally we do it during one of the school vacations and we have one, I think, in February.
Yeah. And you'll be available?
Absolutely.
All right, that sounds good.
And of course, that would be after the fourteenth.
Yes, yes, after the fourteenth. Correct. Anything else from the business, Carl?
Uh, not new.
Okay.
But old.
Mr. Morgan, any new business?
No, sir.
No, sir. North Pond violation, waiting for fishing game agreement development. Appointments for town boards committees, we're still waiting on that due to the situation we have. Town hall roof design, we had them in last week.
Yep, they're working, they're, they're, they're still working with Dave Sutton in to give them other data and information they need. And if we get it this week, then we'll put them on the docket for next week. If not, we'll put them on the week after.
Okay. The sewer system, I am A with Westfield.
Yep.
The LLP renewal with Suffield. Have you met him yet, the new gentleman, Suffield? You did meet him, right?
For selection? Yes, sir, we had a fantastic.
Okay. So we'll have to get back with them on regards to the LLP deal. Concom coordinator combined roles with CPC duties, job description and postings. We made some headway with that.
Yep, Joe, if you want, we need to adopt the revised combined CPC coordinator job description that I worked out with Dave Reed and myself. And then we had attorney Kim Roche put it to form. And we have followed up on that issue by updated job postings. So it's being sent out for for interestments, a whole host of locations and places. And as part of that is also to the board, which had taken a vote earlier last fall unanimously to adopt a new revised job description, which is a combined role for the duties of both conservation coordinator and community preservation coordinator for thirty-two hours a week. And that's something that Joe and I, on the board's behalf.
Correct.
Looks good. I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox aye.
Doug Morgan aye.
All right. Boards and committee procedure. We're working on that. Use of ARPA funds from municipal buildings HVAC air filtration system related to COVID nineteen. Wasn't there a type of paper on that?
Well, at your last meeting, you certainly approved testing kits to be purchased with it. And then when we talked about retrofit in the municipal buildings, the board asked Joe to follow up with Dave Sutton about that issue. So we still need to make sure that we are going to do that and make a decision on allocating those funds. And I suggest that if you had to, you could rank order that ahead of the the water filling stations.
Which we did, right?
So Joe, well, I know, I'm not sure, Joe, what your conversation with Dave Sutton was.
Over the, just the one unit for it, he was looking into it and.
Well, right, but, but, but we, we have to figure out what it costs for these different, for the different buildings and then bring forward a proposal for all the municipal buildings? Or did you want to just go in one unit, which would be in the seven to nine thousand dollar range? And see how it works and then go forward from that?
Oh, I'm not quite sure. That sounds like a slippery slope and I haven't heard that in weeks. Let me check with David to see, because if we do this building, we should do them all because we're going to have issues that we only did this building and.
Well, no, I know that, but, but I just wanted, you know, we tabled it at a past meeting so that he could clarify, review the research and maybe he explained at the last meeting that they would do more than COVID nineteen issues. And they, and these types of units were installed in other municipal buildings.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll keep this on the agenda and I will reach out to him this week to see if, if he did get pricing for the other buildings. Because we're going to have to.
Oh, this guy, especially police fire need to be done.
Yeah.
And the library.
The library. Yep. And we'll bring that up with the school system when we're there on Wednesday, Carl, see where they're headed.
Yep.
Can't hurt. Okay. That's all I see on this for old business. Carl, do you have any old business?
No, just the, the conservation one and CPC one that we took here. That was the pressing issue.
Mr. Morgan.
Uh, two things. One is we had our third or fourth meeting, third meeting of the master plan advisory committee. And the master plan advisory committee did vote to enter into a contractual agreement with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They're also applying for a couple of grants that obviously that that will come in front of this board for signature, but that's the direction that the impact decided to go. And I also asked them, the chair and the vice chair, to be prepared to present their budget strategy for this coming fiscal year because this, the twenty-two money, they've stretched it pretty far. They also have a
Yep.
And they have some CPC money for the housing plan, but they're still not at the goal line. So they need to make sure that, that, that they present that part of their budget for twenty-three. But moving along, and I think our next meeting is February for Fish. So, and the other is, I've gone and met with at least one or two other boards to ask them to consider, strongly consider to adopt the hybrid Zoom format for their meetings. I was unable to attend the Economic Development Commission meeting last week due to a prior commitment. I emailed the chair a week ago and I heard zero back from him regarding his, they've, they've been holding exclusively in-person meetings in the small room in town hall. So I've kind of asked them to adopt it as well. We did ask, we did attend the Board of Appeals meeting last and asked them as well. Uh, we kind of gave them a demo of it, but they're meeting tonight in person only. And I think the only two left, well, there's more than two left. But I, I really think this board pending, we may have to read out, reach out to our legislative delegation and see what their thinking is for come April when that legislation's set to expire. I have a strong feeling they're going to continue it forever as part of just continued technological adoption in government. But this board really might need to start taking a position like we did with recording meetings, that this is how we're going to do it.
So I went to that Board of Appeals meeting, you were there, and I did tell them that I would find the support they needed to do these hybrid meetings. So Carl, what do I need to do to put that in motion? Whether I told them we would have an assistant with them?
Well, the other thing, the other thing is, we, you know, we don't really have a lot of floaters right now, but the cultural council is also looking for somebody, so I think what you may end up doing is, as opposed to having a bunch of part-time positions, we might want to contemplate in the budget process a support person that can handle five or six boards, their scheduling issues, their Zoom support issues, and, and go from there. So that we take a more comprehensive approach than a piecemeal approach.
Understood, but I want something done now. And even if it's piecemeal, I, I get it. We got to talk to the hour, not on screen. I, I get it, Carl. We want to, so can this board make a motion to, to start that process? And then me and you can try to pick away at this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can, we can start.
There's only a few that we need to do. It's not, it's not a huge picture here. It's a small little picture, three or four boards, boards. And I think once we get them trained, I honestly think, Board of Appeals, she felt really comfortable by, by the end of their meeting. But that's my fault because I did not follow through and say, hey, we can help you.
Yeah, I, I don't see that as, that is a pay position from, in another department anyway. So I don't see that ever having to be an issue again. I'm concerned about the other boards that have almost no support at all.
So we can bring, we can bring a technical resource to bear once or twice. And we've trained other board committee chairs or whomever, you know, we've trained the library trustees how to do it. And liked it and they, they've done it. And even if they don't get the public participation, it encourages members to, if they need to or want to attend remote, they can. But it also encourages public participation. I just don't see the downside to it.
Oh, I don't either. I just think some boards just, they're willing to let you do it, but they want you to do it all for.
And I guess then, but we need, you need, you need to work that out. And I don't say you as in you, but it needs to be worked out with the board secretaries who post the agendas because that's where you go off the rails, even if they say they want to do it, but then they post their agenda in person only.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about committees that have no board secretaries.
That's another issue, which I saw the emails this week floating around. And yes, we do have to address that and we will address that.
And the way you have to address that is, right, you gotta, can't do that piecemeal. You gotta do that comprehensive.
I'm behind you on that a hundred percent. We still need to get this slight issue cleaned up while it's winter and we're, you know, we have what we have in front of us as far as COVID and all the other crap. So do we need the board to make a motion to start doing the hybrid or can I just deal with it?
Yeah, Joe, Joe, Joe will deal with it. I'll, I'll work with him on that.
Mr. Fox, any comment on that on that?
Yeah, you know, we're in uncharted waters here. Nobody, I don't think, thought two years afterwards, we'd still be in this position.
Yeah.
But I think Carl, it's, it's just a comfort factor.
I get it.
And just, I mean, these are all volunteers. Nobody's getting paid.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so I think we have to, you know, use the soft approach and work with them.
And that's why we've been trying this, the soft approach for a the soft approach for a long time.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll help you, we'll bring whatever you need. We'll have somebody come down, we'll have Ken, we'll have Jim, we'll have me, we'll have whoever. And, you know.
And I think once everybody's experienced it, we're getting better at it, everybody's getting better at it.
Board of Appeals loved it, but like I said, I dropped the ball, I just, I didn't realize.
Yeah, and you got historical, you got, don't have a secretary.
You got Concom, you got several others. I mean, Concom, you got Cultural Council.
Cultural Council, yeah. So it's, it's just, you know, finding that person that can go there, help them that first couple of meetings. And then obviously they got to have a telephone number to call because we've had snafus.
Yeah.
You know, who do you call if you got a snafu? You know, so, but I, I think, you know, let's head in the right direction. I think we are heading in the right direction. I think, Doug, and you doing what you're doing, trying to help these group now, so. But we're going to get through this then.
Right, and that might have some, that might have some budget implication that we have to accommodate for.
Right.
You know, we've been fortunate and you guys are sitting next to Ken tonight and Ken just gave us his documents of what we need to look
Yep.
At Channel 15 next year. Joe and I got to meet with about stuff, so you know, we, we got to, we got to really nail down some of these things and, and and understand what those costs are and annualize them and make sure that the right support people in place going forward, both administratively for the volunteer boards and technologically.
Correct.
While we're talking about technology, I, I'm going to step a little off. The town prior. Ken, are you doing anything with that?
IT is the gentleman.
Jim's just doing that.
Yeah.
We got to, when we're in the budget process, I think we got to take that up a notch, you know, I don't think we're utilizing it to the best of ability. I mean, we have the same message up there for months, you know. Other groups are, you know, are always saying, can I get my message up there? And I tell them, just contact town hall, but doesn't seem to be a good flow going there.
There isn't.
So.
And that should get, you know, and it's not Jim's fault.
No, it's not.
If you can get to Jim, he'll definitely put something up.
Right.
But it's just trying to get to him and
Yeah, and I think, you know, once you've had a message up there so long, it's, it's
Yeah.
It's just, it's marketing, you know marketing. You, you got to keep things trucked.
Got to keep it trucked.
And I bless the people that I keep seeing that same message for several months. I mean, enough is enough. I went aside there for a little while. I, I apologize.
Deep breath, it's all good, it's all good. Should I change my mic? It's less close for the season, are you getting?
No, I, I like, I like yours.
Okay, because I was going to have time and temp. I actually asked my part-time staff and I was told no.
But as, as since I've stepped off on this ledge, you know, why don't I continue? That maybe it's time to form a little ad hoc committee to see if, if we want to update our sign. I mean, it's, it's getting older. Technology has improved, I mean.
It's all there in that sign. It just, it just comes to like you said, whether it's monies for someone to do that, whether you outsource that to someone that's more creative, that has a time to be more creative, because Jim's just putting stuff up like we asked him to.
Yeah.
We did away with anything to do with, you know, anything animated we can't do in town.
No, but when we originally talked about the sign, one of the things was that it would be giving the time and temperature on a regular basis.
Yes.
You know? And, and I've seen like your sign, I've seen other signs. One of the perfect signs, I think, is the one at the Aglaun High School.
They do a great job.
They do a great job. Visibility is great anytime, day or night.
Animation, they're, they do a great job.
But, but it's, it's easier to read.
It is.
So I, you know, I, I'd like to think that we do have those monies available from that the fee that's charged.
We got to find a 12-year-old because they're so tech savvy. And it's nothing, you know, my daughter does my sign and every time I ask her, one thing changed. It's the eye roll, because it's layer after layer after layer. It's not a click, click, click and you're done.
Yeah.
You know, there's a process there.
Anyways.
So. I dig, I digress. Yeah, and my daughter's expensive, I can tell you that, so. So so much money you can spend on digital signs. Cheaper to have the other sign. But anyways, anything else for old business?
No.
Um, I they, Tom Finner did reach out in regards to a grant towards the master plan. I approved him going forward with it, applying for over $50,000.
Not a gift, it's a grant.
A grant. Right, grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's a, that's for a local technical assistance application to the regional planning agency.
Great idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just make sure that's recorded in these minutes, Rob, and that the chairman did bring that before the board and that the board supported his sign off on that DLTA request.
There you go.
Do you need that in the form of a motion, Carl?
Sure.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
And while we're on the subject of money, Carl, the, the acting Board of Health agent reached out today in regards to budgeting for the new position. He was worried about posting it and not having all those funds available.
Well, the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee have committed to making those, supporting those transfers, I believe, and that would be at the Maytown meeting. Because obviously, when he had already come and talked to you about it and talked to them, we worked five or six months to do this because why even bother go to see you to, to get the approvals?
Right, and I basically explained to him.
So, yeah, so that was already being released today.
Correct, and he just wanted reassurance that he wouldn't, that it, it was fine. I told him it was fine. There were still funds available since the other person had left. And there'd be an issue moving forward within this budget cycle. And he was comfortable with that, so.
Yeah, because what, what, what you'll end up doing in, in day, Mr. Chairman, is we'll, we'll obviously have to accommodate for Tom staying with the new person when they come on to help train them.
Yep.
And then whatever annual is, annualized dollar amount that you choose for that person to get us through June 30th.
Correct. That's all I have.
Did everybody get a chance to attend the MMA on Friday and or Saturday?
I went to the, I attended the Friday session with the Lieutenant Governor. The governor's speech on Saturday and then I attended a session today on municipal finance update with Secretary Hefner from A&amp;F.
Fantastic, wonderful. I took in the Friday and the Saturday and then I've got a couple of sessions scheduled over the next couple of weeks because they spread them all out now over through the rest of January and February. I knew Carl would take the finance one, so it's all good. I took the muni law update one and then there's a couple more coming up. But the governor did talk, the Lieutenant Governor did talk about the local aid increase. And then Governor Baker and then Elizabeth Warren and Marky spoke for a while, but Marky did speak about some of the broadband stuff, so I'm going to try to follow up with his office just to see what it's all about and see if South looks even in the running for any of that or that's more non-service areas for broadband.
I did Friday and Saturday. To use the the speaker they had, I thought on Friday was exceptional. You know, I have one by and then I did listen to the governor's speech. He did a very good job. Claiming to people that weren't happy with the 2.7 increase that they, you know, we've done pretty good over the past seven years and in years that he gave lost, I shouldn't say, well, the revenue was down. They had to take it down the chin and, you know, and explain to people that better be safe than sorry. Just because the revenues happen to be up a little bit right now. Anything can happen in China. No, I thought it was, it's too bad that they canceled it at the last minute, but I understand. But there's nothing like meeting in person and getting to build up a relationship with some of the different officials and other people, select people, selected persons and county councilors, things like that, so. Hopefully by next year, they'll be there.
Wonderful. Anything else? Carl, you're all set?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Randy, are you okay? Is there anything we missed? Okay, just checking. I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Uh, Russ Fox will make a motion.
Hold on.
What?
Valentine's Day meeting. You want to move it to the 15th? Do you want to take that week off?
I may have to travel on the 15th.
We're taking that week off.
But that gives us two weeks off in a row.
Oh, does it? Can we meet the following Tuesday?
That would work for me.
Okay, okay. All right.
If we have, I mean, I just, nothing's permanent yet, but a customer asked me today if I would travel or sign in two years. I would be, I have to be in, be somewhere on the 16th.
So what you're suggesting is not on the 14th, the 21st is a holiday, so we would meet on the 22nd.
That is what I suggested, yeah.
Would that be a meeting with agenda appointments or a consent agenda?
That's vacation week for the kids, though.
You're right.
Is that a meeting, is that a regular posted meeting with appointments or is it a consent agenda?
You could zoom in.
I can zoom in.
It would be a regular meeting. I would propose.
Yeah, regular meeting. Yep.
Just keep it light. Well, the chairman sets the agenda, he'll keep it light.
I'll keep it light. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, tonight was a light meeting.
So I'll, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa.